Good evening, welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of the Mayor and City Council of the City of College Park. I'm Mayor Bianca Motley Broome. It is 7:30 PM. We have a full quorum present with Council members McKenzie, Karn, Arnold, and Gay. And so, at this time, I will call the meeting to order, subject to my continuing objections over ordinance 2024-01 and the omnibus bill that this body passed the first week of January in 2024. Our first item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chaplain Walker is handling our invocation this evening.
Try not to get too old too quick. It's not what it should be. Good evening.
Good evening.
Let us bow in silence. Oh Lord, our Lord, these are troubling times nationally as well as locally. Every now and then, oh Lord, your sweet voice sounds in the middle of our heart, where we can become aware of our struggles within and our struggles without, and our civil duties and our civil responsibilities. As we gather tonight to do the work of the city, as our council, Mayor and Council strive for the good of our city, our community, our state, our national identity, and our national Hopefully, as we proceed in our deliberations to bring about a more perfect union, before our discussions actually take place and votes for what is good, we understand it to be your spirit of understanding, inclusion, consciousness, and to search for the good. We struggle to keep our hearts and our minds focused on the good that can become or can be in this meeting. In life, security, safety, communion, assist with our unconscious ideas and compulsions to act to do the opposite of good. Help us to be aware that trust, friendship, closeness is a way to proceed. Assist our mayor and our city council, oh Lord, to be fine tuned to hear the words of the city, the search for the good, as appraised and as well as opposed, our opposite and demonic tendencies. Assist us all to be transparent for the whole and for the good of the whole. We would be remiss, oh Lord, if we did not recognize and give special thanks for our mayor and city council members, as well as our thanks for all of our leaders and all the people who responsible and worked for the city. Be with them and assist them to be inspired, so they can do their tasks with dignity, truthfulness, respect for one another. We take a moment, oh Lord, to be aware of all those who live or visit in College Park. We know we do not live on a hill to let our lights shine, so that others can see the light and join a more prosperous and loving community, but we live within the hills and the valleys of College Park, striving to be more perfect as persons and as citizens. All those who labor and love in College Park and all of our neighbors, we give thanks. We hope, oh Lord, to leave this meeting with some satisfaction and recognition that we are striving to not only thank the good, but to do the good to one another and for one another. Let all who know that we are a caring and a welcoming city, we are doing our best for ourselves and the city at large. We give you thanks in the name of faith, hope, love, and courage. Amen.
Amen.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, residents of College Park, visitors and friends, all the same. I'm going to read the civility pledge. It's posted up on the screen. You can read along and listen with open ears. The way we govern ourselves is often as important as its positions we take. Our collective decisions would be better when differing views have had the opportunity to be fully vetted and considered. All people have the right to be treated with respect, courtesy, and openness. We value all input. We commit to conduct ourselves at all times with civility, courtesy to each other. I would just ask anybody coming up to the podium for comments, remember the civility pledge. You may not always agree, but show respect at all times. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Are there any additions, deletions, amendments, or changes to the agenda? Hearing none. We'll move on to number three.
College Park, Georgia, Georgia's global city, is home to the busiest airport in the world, Hartsfield-Jackson Atlanta International Airport, the second largest convention center in Georgia, the Georgia International Convention Center, which houses Gateway Center Arena, and College Park Municipal Golf Course, one of the most challenging golf courses in the greater Atlanta metropolitan area. College Park is a unique city for these reasons alone. It is also an accomplished city.
Greetings, everyone. We're proud of what we've done in 2024. So now, it's time to reflect on the incredible accomplishments College Park has made over the years. We've worked well to build a strong global community, from improving public services and investing in our future. 2024 has been a year of progress. Let's look at what we've accomplished together. Community enhancement. We allocated $200,000 in community enhancement funding to restore the museum project for the Price Barbershop and the Harvard Avenue duplex, which is right next to it. And I was a first. I was the first College Park elected official selected to be a part of the Atlanta Regional Commission's Regional Leadership Institute since the inception of the Commission in 1947. Also, I hosted a series of workshops centered around social, emotional growth in our community. Flint River Preserve, I advocated with Congressman Scott's office for funding for this project. I was able to get council to agree to re-contract on the sale of the property with MARTA and renewed the EPA Brownsville funding for the cleanup of the site. This wonderful parcel will connect the City of College Park to the Belt Line, which is over $160 million, which we're projecting at this time. As we move now into 2025, we've got even more projects. One of these is, in City Hall, we're going to house a quiet room for employee mental and emotional health. Also, we currently have a program at Club E for STEM, but we're going to add even more students onto that and take it over to the Brady Center as well. Together, we will thrive in 2025.
Hello, everyone. 2024 has been a year of progress. Let's take a look at what we've accomplished together. Free parks and recreation for low-income families. I sponsored and worked to establish our Apartment Task Force ordinance to eliminate blight in our communities. We hosted our first Boys to Men Conference for young black men at the Gateway Arena. The city created a $3.8 million community enhancement fund for direct community needs. College Park lowered property taxes for our residents by over 8%. I sponsored and established several electric bill cash funds for our residents most in need. We've added 15 new police vehicles to the fleet for better community coverage. Business. For the second time, I have hosted our How to Do Business with College Park program for small business owners. We've established our Healthy Looks Good on You campaign in conjunction with the College Park Fire Department and Fulton County's Board of Health for better health outcomes for our residents. Overall, we've achieved significant progress and established some innovative projects and initiatives for our city and for our community. Together, we thrive in 2025.
Hi, College Park. As we close out 2024, I'm proud to reflect on a year of progress, collaboration, and service to our community. Each month brought new challenges and opportunities, and I was honored to serve College Park every single step of the way. From advocating for families and small businesses to securing transformative regional partnerships, these highlights represent just some of what we've accomplished together this year. We've supported families by partnering with community organizations to provide essential resources such as food and gasoline. Regionally, we worked alongside our partners to drive transformative projects that enhance our community and the broader region. Some of those key initiatives include the Aratropolis Atlanta Blueprint 2.0. After feedback from our community, we advocated to retain the climbing wall at the Tracy Wyatt Recreation Center. Our community saw the opening of the Promise Career Institute, a $40 million investment from Fulton County Schools for our kids. We promoted local businesses through new initiatives, including my Mayor and Me video series. College Park, 2024 was quite the year, but we made it through together. I'm looking forward to 2025, because together, in 2025, we thrive.
Hello, everyone. As we prepare to embrace 2025, we rejoice in the City of College Park's 2024 achievements made. Let's take a look at what we've accomplished together. The infrastructure improvements included the 26 cameras installed and 35 new streetlights all up and down the Gobby Road corridor. We also had many improvements at the Tracy Wyatt Recreation Complex, including upgrades to the computer labs and also new flooring installed. We also had a historical vote on naming some of our College Park streets after HBCUs and trailblazing citizens in our upcoming development for Six West, a computer giveaway program that was sponsored by merchants of the Old National Discount Mall. During our annual budgeting process, I sponsored and championed a 3% cost of living adjustment for all city employees up to a maximum of $3,000. Also, one of our many infrastructure projects included the installation of new pickleball courts at Zup Park. We also upgraded the tennis ball courts. Another event that took place on the Gobby Road corridor was the First Christmas on Gobby, and we are thankful to our merchants who helped us to sponsor that event. We're looking forward to continuing that event on an annual basis to make sure that we include all residents of College Park when we are having citywide events. So a little history about the Gas on Gobby event. During our National Night Out event this past summer, Pastor Jesse Sims of Mega Faith Center came to me and informed me that he wanted to do something grand for the city. And I was like, okay, something grand? I am on board. And so, that ended up being Gas on God. One of my most significant legislative items was sponsoring legislation for the Purple Heart designation and proclamation in the City of College Park. As you may know, Ward 3 is split into two counties, Fulton County and Clayton County. College Park was the last city in Clayton County to adopt the Purple Heart Proclamation, which then meant that Clayton County became a Purple Heart County, which was very significant, because Clayton County has the largest veteran population in the state of Georgia. So I want to thank my legislative partners and my colleagues for helping me to push this legislation forward. Together, we thrive in 2025.
It is our pleasure to report on the City of College Park's outstanding achievements of 2024. In our progress over the past year, we have accomplished many first-time and outstanding achievements that have fostered engagement, unity, and strengthened bonds across the community. Let's take a look at what we've accomplished together in Ward 4. The Ward 4 Festival showcases the best things in the city, welcoming over 3,500 residents this year. Here are a few updates on our Phillips Park construction. We have just finished building a $675,000 commercial playground, two full-court basketball courts, a new soccer mini-pitch, and pickleball courts. We have also created groundbreaking senior citizen legislation, including tax exemptions, utility discounts, and service line warranties. Surveillance cameras and improved lighting have contributed to a 31% decrease in crime. A community mural on Herschel Road celebrates Ward 4's rich history and diverse residents, honoring their contributions over the years. We have also continued to support the Jack Longino Scholarship. Together, we thrive in 2025.
Hello, everyone. Can you believe that we are coming to the close of 2024 already? It's been a fierce year, and as we prepare to enter 2025, it's a great time to reflect on our incredible strides our city has made in 2024. We've worked hard to make our community vibrant, stronger, inclusive, enjoyable, and more sustainable. From improving public services to investing in our future, 2024 has been a year of progress. While we certainly could not cover all of the accomplishments in this segment, let's take a look at a few of the highlights we have achieved together. We reduced the mileage rate without reducing services such as refuse pickup twice a week for ourselves, citizens, and businesses. We've provided a steady supply of safe drinking water. We provided power supply to our resident that is 29% lower than that of Georgia Power. We've improved the response and restoration time of power outages and cleanup during major events, increased the presence of park rangers in our parks and community facilities, responded to the needs of our citizens and visitors who were stranded at our international airport during a major crisis, provided resources to families and seniors with donation of food and other necessity, with increased the patrol and presence of law enforcement in every area of our community to deter and reduce crime, improved community lighting and script to enhance the attractiveness of our city as a safety measure. For years, the Six West project was dormant with little or no progress. This year, we have moved that project forward. The art connector on Camp Creek is nearing completion and has already begun attracting attention to College Park. We are focused on embracing the unique fabric of College Park while illuminating the unparalleled feel of the tapestry that makes College Park so special, places like our Main Street corridor, Phillips Park, Conley and Brady Community Center, Georgia International Convention Center, and the arena, and the Tracy Wyatt Community Center. As you may recall, this year, we were honored to host visit from our very own Vice President Kamala Harris, former force lady, Mrs. Michelle Obama, and the Korean delegation at GICC right here in College Park. We have paved numerous streets in our four wards, and it continues to be a priority in our capital improvement planning. In collaboration with the Chief of Police, we developed an approach to obtaining crime reduction in all four wards of the city. We are implementing effective, community-driven strategies that address the specific need identified in our crime mapping and analysis. We double our commitment to code enforcement, which protects the safety of our citizens and their livelihood by increasing the number of code enforcement officers. They have sighted, blighted, and inhabited habitable dwellings, and will continue to work to ensure that every occupied dwelling is habitable and compliant for public use. We are on the move in College Park, and we look ahead with great anticipation for even greater success and prosperity for the community of College Park in 2025.
College Park, a Purple Heart city for our veterans, an international city for our citizens and commuters, an exciting city of entertainment, a safe city for our residents, an accomplished city thanks to our city government, a smart city for now and our future, Georgia's global city, College Park, Georgia.
Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion.
Thank you, Councilmember Karn. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember Arnold. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. That is unanimous. Is there a motion to approve the workshop meeting minutes from January 21st? Thank you, Councilmember Karn. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember Arnold. Any discussion?
Yes. I have one, just one, on page 32, line 1023. It should be Councilwoman Tracy Arnold and not Councilman.
All right. Subject to that one change, is... All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. That is unanimous. So a motion to approve the regular session meeting minutes from January 21st?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember. All those... I'm sorry. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. That is unanimous. We've got proclamations, resolutions, plaques, and announcements.
I would like to introduce our new employees. We do have at least one new employee today, and I'm going to ask that employee if he would come forth and give you his name and the department that he works with and to greet you as the new employee.
My name... My name is Jason Cheek. I'm the new CCTV technician, and I'm just happy to be here.
Photo ready?
Yeah. Group on three. One, two, and three. One, two, and three. Thank you.
I would like to introduce our All-Star Employee of the Month for the month of January. This employee returned to the City of College Park in January 2024 and has been very instrumental to our team. He is punctual, dependable, thorough, friendly, reliable, and professional. He always has a smile on his face and never complains. His contributions and hard work behind the scene play a vital role in keeping our Conley Recreation Center clean, safe, and welcoming to all. His consistent dedication, positive attitude, and willingness to go above and beyond are a testament to his commitment to our team and to everyone who passes through the Recreation Center doors. He approaches every day with a level of care and pride that doesn't go unnoticed. Please join me in congratulating our January All-Star of the Month, Frederick Johnson, on a well-deserved recognition.
One, two, and three. Again. I'm not going to try to give him a smile because I had a hard time the first time.
I would like to call Ms. Keisha Porter and her family to the front.
This proclamation is for Ms. Keisha Porter, and it reads, and it's for her exceptional leadership and service. Whereas, Keisha J. Porter, a proud graduate of the University of Massachusetts Amherst with a Bachelor of Arts in Human Resources Development, has dedicated over two decades to advancing the fields of human resources, communications, and leadership development across diverse sectors including healthcare, technology, banking, and government agencies. And whereas, Ms. Porter began her illustrious career in the banking industry, excelling in HR technology, risk management, and organizational development, laying a strong foundation for her future contributions as a federal contractor supporting the U.S. Navy, U.S. Marines, and Department of Energy Defense and Health and Human Services, as well as her distinguished service to the White House Learning and Development Division, LDD, within the executive office of the President. And whereas, Ms. Porter has demonstrated her commitment to eradicating global inequities through her career, excuse me, through her work in the nonprofit sector, serving as the Learning and Development Manager for the RED organization in New York City and the ONE Campaign Headquartered in Washington, DC, where she cultivated leadership skills to address pressing global issues. And whereas, driven by a desire to give back to her hometown of Atlanta, Georgia, Ms. Porter returned to the metropolitan Atlanta area to lead continuing education and leadership development programs at Children's Healthcare of Atlanta, where her efforts in designing and implementing educational initiatives have significantly enhanced healthcare professionals' skills, directly contributing to improved care for Georgia's children. And whereas, Ms. Porter's unwavering commitment to community growth and empowerment is evident through her volunteerism and civic engagement, including facilitating financial literacy education with Junior Achievement of Atlanta. Okay, I just lost my place. Okay, mentoring students in Atlanta Public Schools and the Coretta Scott King Young Women's Leadership Academy, and earning the esteemed President's Volunteer Service Award for her efforts. And whereas, Ms. Porter has further enriched the metropolitan Atlanta area community through her service as a elected post and seat holder for Fulton County Democratic Party. Her role as a board member for the Atlanta Airport District, that's the DMO for College Park, organization representing the city of College Park, Warit Three, and her ongoing advocacy for the city and community development. And Ms. Porter is a proud and active member of the Gathering Baptist Church in College Park, Georgia, where her faith and dedication to service continues to inspire and guide her work in the community. And whereas, Ms. Porter embodies the spirit of service, lifelong learning, leadership, inspiring countless individuals to pursue meaningful contributions to their communities and personal growth. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the Mayor and City Council of the City of College Park do hereby recognize the remarkable achievements and contributions of Ms. Keisha J. Porter.
Thank goodness for technology, because we can't seem to locate the actual paper copy, but we've got this online because we need to honor the Six U Flag Football Team. Whereas, the College Park Rams Flag Football Program had ten teams and over one hundred kids from ages five to twelve compete in the local NFL Flag League starting September 2024 through November 2024. And whereas, the College Park Six and Under Blue Flag Football Team won the Youth NFL Flag Football League Championship Game on Saturday, November 2nd, 2024. And whereas, the Six and Under Team finished the season with an undefeated record. What was your record? What was your record? I've got it right here, but what was your record? It was eleven and oh, all right. Well, and you had a three and oh record in the playoffs. And whereas, members of the Six U Rams, why don't you come on up when I call your name? Six U Rams are Jackson Bean. Kai Clayton. Anthony Daniels. Big Rames, okay. Ramsey Gant. Raheem Green-Sloka. Colleen Johnson. Kyrie Johnson. Connor Jones. Missy O'Plummer. John Robinson. Maddox Thomas. Am I missing anybody? Yes, who am I missing? No? Okay, all right. The team was coached by Rashad Green-Sloka and Ralph Jenkins. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the Mayor and City Council of the City of College Park that the College Park Six and Under Flag Football Team is recognized for your hard work, your dedication, and your accomplishments during the 2024 NFL Flag Football Season. Congratulations. Ms. Johnson, I was just asked if they got $300 for that. Because I just thought we got pictures. You already have a ring. Okay, so when we get the picture, make sure you put on your rings and show everybody, okay? Let's go, let's take a picture. Come on, come on. And parents, come on down, take a picture. Let's see, everybody, bring out the rings on. All right, show them off, show them off. Those are pretty rings.
Don't worry, look right here, one, two, three. We have one, two, three. One more, one, two, three.
Well, it looks like everybody was here to see the Six U Rams. That was it. Place cleared out. But it is exciting and we are so proud of them. And we are also proud of our power in utilities, because, well, let's just hear about it. Where's Mr. Richardson? Is he here? Oh, there you go. You know what? I was looking for you in your seat and you were standing in the back. All right, this is a proclamation recognizing the College Park Department of Power and Utilities. Whereas, a winter storm advisory was issued for much of the nation and particularly the southeast and northeast Georgia on Wednesday, January 8th, 2025. And whereas, the City of College Park Public Works Power and Utilities Department immediately sprang into action, implementing their inclement weather plan and protocols. And whereas, a predawn winter storm brought four inches of snow and a wintry mix on the morning of Friday, January 10th, 2025, blanketing north Georgia and causing power outages primarily due to fallen trees or limbs pulling down or impeding transmission lines. And whereas, College Park Power and Utilities personnel were immediately on the scene during ongoing bitter cold and wind, restoring power for more than eighteen hundred customers, as well as cutting and removing fallen trees and limbs and returning warmth, safety, and full power to every utility customer experiencing outages in less than four hours. Whereas, all Power and Utilities team members also earlier performed above and beyond the call this fall, when the remnants of Hurricane Helene also wreaked havoc and caused power outages across the city of College Park on September 26th and 27th, 2024, and again, the team fully restored power in less than half a day. Therefore, be it proclaimed by the Mayor and the Council of the City of College Park, Georgia, that we recognize the City of College Park's Department of Power and Utilities and applaud the performance of these dedicated individuals of the City of College Park and thank each and every employee for putting the needs of our community first and foremost during these challenging times of inclement weather and potential natural disaster.
I'm just a seventh on the better part of the team, and we've had some strange weather, and I think we're going to have more, so we'll be ready.
We are also recognizing the Department of Streets and Highways. Whereas, a winter storm advisory was issued for much of the nation and particularly southwest and northeast Georgia on Wednesday, January 8th, 2025. And whereas, the City of College Park Public Works Street and Highways Department immediately sprang into action, implementing their inclement weather plan and protocols. And whereas, the City of College Park Streets and Highways crews pretreated all main roadways and highly trafficked corridors with brine and road salt across the thirteen square miles of the city before the first snow fell. And whereas, the predawn snow and wintry mix blanketed the city, making roadways and particularly bridges and overpasses challenging for travel, commerce, and closed Hartsfield, Atlanta-Jackson International Airport, delaying or grounding more than nine hundred flights on Friday, January 10th, 2025. And whereas, College Park experienced frozen roadways, shoulders, and sidewalks, as well as generally unsafe road conditions across the city. And whereas, within forty-eight hours of the roughly four-inch snowfall, streets and highways members had plowed snow, scraped and melted snow and ice, making virtually all main thoroughfares safe for driving, and then turned to residential streets and sidewalks for relief from the frozen precipitation. And now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the Mayor and City Council of the City of College Park, Georgia, that we hereby recognize and applaud the performance of these individuals and departments of the City of College Park and thank each and every employee for putting the needs of our community first and foremost during these challenging times of inclement weather and potential natural disaster.
Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Are you ready for public comments?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. We have a state representative here this evening, Kim Schofield.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
Council and residents. I know I wasn't on the agenda, so I really thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak with you tonight. I'm here to share an exciting opportunity for College Park to shine on the global stage. From March 9th to March 12th, Her Royal Majesty, Queen Alori Atuasi III, Queen of Wari, Africa, which is a part of Nigeria, will be visiting our region. College Park, known for its welcoming spirit and international diversity, has a unique chance to host her during this historic visit. I'm organizing a reception and dinner in her honor on March 11th and would love to partner with College Park as a way to bring the state and our city together. This is more than just a celebration, it's a diplomatic opportunity. Her Majesty's visit will be accompanied by media attention, and it offers us a platform to showcase College Park as a hub for global engagement, hospitality, and cultural exchange. I'll be extending an invitation to Congressman David Scott, Senators Warnock and Ossoff, Congresswoman Nikima Williams. the Consulate General of Nigeria, and other consulate generals, mayors, business and economic leaders to join us. Their presence will underscore the significance of this occasion and open doors for new partnership. To make this event truly impactful, I'm asking for the use of the GICC in a buffet as an in-kind donation, similar to what you did for the Korean diplomats. This gesture will spotlight College Park as a featured host and demonstrate our city's commitment to fostering state and city relationships, partnerships, and international relationships. And, excuse me, I don't wanna feel like I'm... This is a chance to elevate College Park's profile, strengthen diplomatic ties, and create opportunities for economic and cultural growth. Together, we'll continue to make College Park a beacon of global hospitality and diplomacy. I thank you for your time. I'm happy to answer any questions and look forward, because in the interest of time, trying to get a commitment to securing this.
Well, thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Representative Schofield.
Appreciate you coming. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
What was the date again?
March 11th.
It's a Tuesday night?
Okay.
From 6:30 to 8:30.
First public comment, Elizabeth Lester.
Good evening.
Good evening.
There's two items that I would like to briefly touch on this evening. The first is the contract for on-call maintenance services with RSW Services. I know the contract appears to be open-ended and without much detail about what services are actually being provided. And while it's obviously important to have companies available for on-call maintenance, I'm concerned about the opportunity for a contract like this to be used potentially for abuse. This is also particularly relevant, given that it appears that they were paid over $150,000 last year for what I would presume was also maintenance services. But the public does not know what those services were because the contract was never brought before council in a public meeting to vote. I would hope it means it wasn't the case that there were no contracts in place and that we only operated off of order forms without other legal protections for the city, but choose to give the city the benefit of the doubt as to this particular point. There's larger issues, however. As the owner of RSW Services is Ms. Sabrina Willis, who served as Vice Chair of BIDA last year and is the Chair of BIDA this year. I recommend that the council and city attorney consider whether this is permitted under both the City Code of Ethics and the State of Georgia Code of Ethics as it applies to public officials. The City Code of Ethics applies to all city officials, which is defined as including all members of the city council, Planning and Zoning Commission, Board of Zoning Appeals, all advisory commissions and committee members and appointed city members. Presumably, a member of BIDA would therefore be considered a city official under the ordinance and under the Code of Ethics. It states, under the standard of conduct, that no city official shall enter into any contract with the city except as specifically authorized by state statutes. Unless there's an applicable exemption, then under state statutes, I'd be concerned that this would be a violation. Given that this is on the consent agenda tonight, I think that this is something that needs to be looked at further and possibly taken off of the consent agenda so that you can discuss with the city attorney whether there's an issue. I also would refer you to Georgia Law Title 36 and Title 45, both of which provide and address a Code of Ethics for members of local authorities created pursuant to a constitutional amendment, which is the case of BIDA. And it says that ethics set forth in 4510-3 applies to members of such authorities. Given time constraints, I'll move forward. Second item is the contract for the garden at Sabrina Willis Park. I think a garden is a great idea, but I'm concerned about the location and what will be done to ensure it doesn't get ruined by floods, given that it is in a flood plain. I also question whether the city has followed required procurement policies under state law. The Public Works Construction Law requires that projects at or above 100,000 must be bid out pursuant to certain procurement rules. While this says it's only 90,000...
Thank you, ma'am.
Stanley Mohammed.
Greetings, Mayor and Council.
Thanks.
Assalamualaikum. May God's peace be upon you. Thank you. And Happy Black History Month to you all. I want to say that I stand before you still giving praise and thanks to God for our wonderful black elected officials. I thank God for the good work that they're doing. Our city manager, our wonderful city attorney, which his predecessor, Mr. Steve Fentcher, never got scrutiny as he's receiving. And this is because of, obviously because he's black. And this insidious force that we are witnessing attacking our black elected officials, it's not just going on in College Park, but it's happening all over the country under Jacob Hoover's counterintelligence program. And it's live and well, attacking any black elected official who's working hard on behalf of our people. And unfortunately, as I shared with you all before, we're experiencing a lot of plantation politics. I'm listening online and watching online, white people, who's only a small percentage of black College Park, are criticizing our black elected officials. But when white people were in position, when Ambrose Clay was here, I never heard a peep from none of you. So now we have this racism. And you have these Uncle Toms and those who actually are trying to cater to white people, who are really not black. They're black, white people walking around because they have the mind of the slave master. And I come to you with the Book of Proverbs 22 verse 8. It says, "Whoever sows injustice will reap calamities." And we see the calamities, the fires in California. We see the snow here. And our power director said, "More is coming," is because of injustice. Injustice to your once slave. Michelle Johnson unjustly reported me to the police department. Lies. And House Negroes and right racists took those lies and put it in our wonderful councilwoman's recall lawsuit. But you're not saying nothing about what she's doing. She don't even qualify for the position. She needs a BA degree in recreation. She doesn't have one.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Johnny Williams.
Good evening, Ms. Johnny. Would you mind... Oh, there you go. Chief's gonna help you with the microphone there.
I'm here about my tax exemption. I qualify for it. I left it outside with the reception. He was not here. Phil, he wasn't in. And now they can't find it. They sent me a bill. I've called him fifteen times. He called me back three times. Now it goes to the answering machine. This is a office not home. They should get their message. And I'm asking you to help me because I know I brought it in here. And he said he don't have it. Someone had it. And I shouldn't have to go through this. So see what you can do for me and let me know.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Johnny, I'll be back in touch with you on that.
Grace Lunsford.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Thank you. That was... I'm a filmmaker. That was a really fun video. A lot of awesome accomplishments and congratulations. This has been a historic year, no doubt. Devil's in the details, which is why I'm here. And November 8th, shortly after Hurricane Helene, I emailed about the sewer pipe. Our rip wall got thrown about twenty feet down just after improvements were made this summer. No action has been taken on that. And with subsequent rains and freezing, I can now see the exposed PVC pipes. And now I am concerned that damage may be coming. So, you know, it's February, bringing that detail back up. It's been out there. We also have water flowing down Cambridge. It's been that way for like two days now. Kids are having a good time bicycling in it in this wonderful weather, which is great. The trees are getting trimmed and I see some attention happening on Washington Road, and that's exciting to see. Kendall, which is an arborist, was on my property today and I hope that they will be attending to the tree that was also reported that is practically in cityway and absolutely moved about three feet after Hurricane Helene again. It's just any moment with that tree. There's some major littering happening around Virginia Avenue. I just, I really think we should lean into that and maybe even look into litter enforcement cameras. That could maybe be a dedicated fund for Keep College Park Beautiful. Community enhancements. It looks like we just got a deadline for March 11th. The GICC signs, front and behind, so facing the Renaissance Hotel and Camp Creek Highway, are highly pixelated. They've been that way for months. I suggest we try and get that together before we have the world looking at us. Additionally, I think the painting on the pavement in front of the Promise Career Institute is awesome. I think it has slowed down traffic. You can absolutely still see those parking spaces and use them. That is also College Park Street. And I am going to encourage you to use this opportunity to, as a city, take some agency over your main street and not be bullied by GDOT. So, out of the mouth of babes, I was reminding my daughter last week that they were voting tonight on closing Park Lane Elementary, which is a school that our students go to. February 11th is the deadline, the last time that you can speak in front of the seven people who will vote for it. She had asked me before I said seven people, "Are you gonna vote on it, mommy?" I said, "No, there's seven people who are voting." And she goes, "That's stupid." I was like, "It kind of is, isn't it, for such a major decision?" And also, I just encourage you again to consider the charter because a city with $2 million budget that can have major decisions made on two votes alone is an issue. We really need to reexamine our charter and our representation for the city. I think we should come up on that. So I will leave us with Micah 6:8. Act justly, love mercy, walk humbly.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you, Grace.
Alex and Lauren Bean.
I think that they might have been the parents of one of the six U players.
Thank you, ma'am. Ramsey Gant.
Also, also in the... Yeah, I think they probably just signed in because they...
Frank Robinson. Same.
They probably just thought they had to sign in.
Louis Oaken.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening, ma'am.
Everybody, thanks. We're really excited to be here. This is Cheryl. I'm Louis. We're here from Helping Hands Holiday Dinner. And we really just wanted to come by today and thank you all so much for the opportunity and the partnership that we have this year for this year's Helping Hands Holiday Dinner at the GICC. It was great. It was, we saw over 2,500 kids. We saw close to 5,000 people there. Everybody had a great time. Everybody was fed. It was just, it was just wonderful. And we can't thank you enough for the opportunity. And we hope to have this partnership for years to come so we can continue to help our community. Cheryl has just a little... Going back there. Is it okay if we come up here to give you guys...
You can sleep with the clerk. Sleep with the clerk.
Okay. The blacks are for the men. The yellows are for the women. But again, it was really, truly remarkable event. And this is our 36th year doing it. It's our first year here at the GICC. It's 37th year, I'm sorry. Getting C now. But we do have a one-minute clip I would love to show you guys. Just that we, our videographer took at the event. It's just a short little clip.
Don't think...
No, okay. Oh, okay. No worries. Okay, so I don't have a short clip to show you. Or you could look at it some other time. It'll be, we have that there for you guys to look at. And again, your support and everybody at the GICC, Yanis and all the staff there are absolutely remarkable. The experience of the hospitality and the buy-in to what we were doing for our community was just ever, it was just so palpable and how their service-minded everybody was. And you guys, thank you for allowing us to have access. And I hope, like I said, that we could do that for many years. This is our 37th and I've still got a few more years in me. So I want to continue to do this for as long as I'm physically capable. This year was our trial. We had, we've learned a lot this year from the event. Certain things that we need to do, a little different. It was nothing terrible. No one would know anything except me because I'm like, I know how everything, I want everything to go. But we, we're gonna grow it now because now we know how many we can handle. This year I did not want to see 10,000 people. I was just like, I don't know that we are ready for that. But now we know we can grow it and now we can know we could do it well. With that, I never had a thought that we couldn't do it well. But it's all about reaching the families. And I think we did a real good job. And with your guy's support in the City of College Park, and Joe, thank you so much for all your help as well, all you guys. It was really, really special for me. You know, we've been at Henderson's Event Center for 27 years or however many years. And this is world-class compared to what we're used to. We used to lay carpet and take it up. The staff at the GICC made our life so easy so we could just depend on taking care of kids and trying to show them the best time that they'll always remember the rest of their lives. And this year I did hear a lot of that, of people saying, you know, when I told them, one of my patients actually, he was a, he was, I told him, "Hey, we're having this event. You want to volunteer?" And he goes, "Oh, what is it?" I said, "We should do it at Henderson's." "Oh, you used to do that holiday, that Christmas dinner over there?" I said, "Yeah." And he goes, "That was the only holiday we had growing up." My whole life, that was the holiday that we had. And I heard that at least six times this year. So that's pretty cool. Because also my son lost his tooth. He came in from Arizona for the event and his filling and his crown fell out. And that night, he came at home and he got in at midnight and we picked him up. And he was, and he had, we made an emergency dentist appointment for him the next day. So we went there over in East Point and he walked in there and the girl goes, "Oh," he goes, "What happened? My crown fell out on my way from Arizona." "Oh, why are you here in town?" He says, "Well, I'm here to visit my folks." And we have, my dad has a charity called the Helping Hands Holiday Dinner. And he goes...
Sir, I apologize. Are we at three minutes?
Yes, Mayor.
Okay.
We're having issues with our timer.
Okay.
Apologies.
Okay, okay.
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Because it just seemed like it was...
Thank you again.
But thank you, sir. Appreciate it. I wanted to just make sure everybody's got enough time.
City manager, if you could, I guess, review that clip and if it's okay, we want to maybe put it on the television station. Maybe it was a great event we had.
Thank you.
But again, thank you all. I'm sorry I went over.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, that is all for a public comment in person.
Okay, if anyone... If anyone wishes to speak...
I have a question.
We get the people who are here.
Representative Schofield, before you leave, can you get with Yanis? Yanis? Representative Schofield, before you leave, can you get with Giannis? Giannis, is that Giannis? Can you get what I, our director of the Convention Center and get, give him the information about the delegation, please? All right, Giannis, you see it, right?
No, one of the people here first, who showed up first.
No, email comes first.
Email is next, and then we open up to people that are...
It was opened up to people who are here, and then emails.
Do we have any email comments?
Wait a minute. Wait a minute. Hold on a second. Mr. Wilson, go right ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Counselor, my name is Bobby Wilson. We run Metro Atlanta Urban Farm, 3271 Main Street, in the heart of College Park, with College Park at heart. Metro Atlanta Urban Farm is not a pinto, nor are we a pacer. We've been around this Irving agriculture movement now for more than 35 years. We have been doing the work, with 15 of those years been right here in the great city of College Park. We have had both impact on large farms as well as those older farms, as well as those who are new and beginning farmers. Do you know what a farm trachometer is? Most of you don't. That's what puts you into the government system of being a farmer. Did you know about the American Care Act, that farmers were really able to get paid? We introduced a lot of farmers to the American Care Act. We have been in the process of training through FSA Farm Services Agent, NRCS, Natural Resource Conservation Service. We have hosted jobs tours across the great state of Georgia. We have done agriculture research science projects right at, right at 3271 Main Street. V103 is one of our major partners, and just this, just this year alone, Homeland Security joined us in helping to help secure their food system and teaching their staff more about food security. Timing is everything in agriculture. We have already started the process of preparing strawberry plants for the new garden. We've talked about the importance of Hugo Mound to help mitigate flooding into the area. We have done those things as necessary. We have already started the process of looking for grant money, because at the end of this one year, this program will continue on. As an Irving agriculturist with the University of Georgia Extension Service, we established more than 350 gardens during my tenure there. And we continue to do so the last 15 years at 3271 Main Street, right here in College Park. We're excited about the possibilities of what we can do in all of the districts. I can reassure you, people will learn how to grow their own fresh fruits and vegetables, free of chemicals, good, healthy food, that not only gonna feed people, but it's gonna make a difference, a positive difference in their lives.
Thank you, sir.
As well as this community.
Thank you, sir. Oh, okay. Well, did you sign up? You didn't sign up, though?
No, no one signed up now. No one signed.
I'm sorry, ma'am. Okay, all right. Well, thank you, Mr. Wilson.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I want to finish off what my husband was saying earlier. My husband and I have been married 36 years, by God's grace. We have had nine children from, they're both of our children, seven girls and two boys. And I'm very disappointed of what is going on with how he's being targeted because of racism, you know? And I am not, you know, black American woman. So, I am able to see it and able to, you know, see the difference. And my husband has been targeted because of his belief, how he carries himself. And it's a known fact, it's a known history, that, you know, through the years, Caucasian women has always targeted black men, innocent black men, to get them murdered, locked up, imprisoned. And so now, one of your employees, Michelle Johnson, who has targeted my husband because of, you know, her discriminative practices, has got the police involved, tried to do a report, to put a restraining order on my husband. My husband has, he has never ever been abusive to me as his wife, his daughter, seven girls, to no woman. If anything, he will give his life to fight for any woman, regardless of their color, their class, their creed. That's his known history. So, for her to involve the Police Department of the City of College Park was wrong. And y'all permitting this to happen is not right, because one thing about my husband, he always fights for justice when it comes to black people being oppressed, black people being done wrong. When any time injustice exists, he doesn't care. He gives sacrifice. He fights because he knows it's not fair. And the only reason y'all up there, because some black person paid a price for all of y'all to be in leadership. And you cannot forget that and get passes to Caucasian people because they're white, because you want to please them. That history is known. So, you have to stop that cycle. You have to care about your own, because they don't care about you. And Trump, guess what? He's gonna make us all realize who is who. You know, I'm glad he's in office, because he's the one that's gonna show y'all, they care nothing about you. And I'm not talking about, you know, your friends. I have white family, okay? So, we're not talking about that. We're talking about the majority that are racist.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening.
Good evening.
One of my, my father's good friends, Mr. Bobby, just spoke a minute ago. My father used to be the chairman at the farm, the urban farm right down the street from us, and my son had a job there. He, he, he used to feed chickens. Like, we were literally talking about it yesterday, because it's his dream to buy me some Jordans for my next birthday. And I said, "How you gonna get money?" He said, "I'm gonna go for Mr. Bobby again." So, he wants to come back and reclaim that job. I was so proud of my son last year, because he fought for something he wanted here in the City of College Park. In the, in Ward 3, there was a rock wall, and they wanted to tear down that rock wall. But my son, he came to this podium multiple times to make sure that he could hold on to what he cherished. And on January the 18th, they reopened the rock wall. It was amazing event. My son spoke at the event. There, it was packed to capacity, and so many people went up and down that wall that day. After my son spoke, so did the councilwoman from Ward 1, I'm sorry, the mayor pro tem from Ward 1, as well as the councilperson from Ward 4. And both of them stated, "You can't do this without leadership. No matter what the community wants, you can't do this without us," which seems opposite to the way that the city should work. The city should embrace those in the community who come out and want to do better for the city. One thing we've been dealing with recently is seeing the use of mayor pro tem being proliferated throughout the city. And when I, when I looked up my understanding of what it was, it says temporary. And it's so interesting that last year, we spent an entire year figuring out a way to diminish the mayor. However, this year, we celebrate being a temporary mayor. And it just doesn't make sense to me. And that was capitalized this week by a post that was on the city's website, where they tried to show the leadership of the city. I just want to take a moment, because I probably only got a minute left, to read some of the comments that your constituents are saying up under it. "I find this disrespectful, disrespectful. Shame on you for putting the Mayor Bianca last on this manipulating, last on this and manipulating it that Mayor Pro Tem first, and childish and disappointing." Somebody said hashtag narcissist. Somebody else said, "Why is the mayor last? Seems like she should be first. She was elected by the entire city and not just a single ward. And posting her after the city manager is a sign of disrespect." Somebody else, "This is not okay. It's embarrassing."
Thank you, sir.
You're embarrassing. It's embarrassing. And just to counter, just to build upon what Mr. James said, my definition said the same thing. It says temporary, but it also says to act in the absence of. She's there. She's not absent. I don't see you absent. So, to me, Mayor Pro Tem, and Councilman Gay, you've been on council longer than anybody. You, I didn't see you puffering up Mayor Pro Tem more than you did your position as councilman for Ward 4. One thing I can say about you is you represent your people. Our councilwoman does not. She seems to think that a term that you aren't elected to, but you are merely given by order, somehow outweighs that which you were elected by 12 votes. And to me, that's a slap in my face, when you spend more time puffering up a title that was passed down than you do being a councilwoman to the people that elected you. My mayor is present. She is not absent. Look up the Latin definition. Like Mr. James says, "It's temporary in the absence of, pro tempore." That's what it means, people. After you become mayor pro tem, if Councilman Carr is here, the way it goes, he will be pro tem, and then down the line. But guess what? That doesn't matter as long as we have a what? A mayor. And I see we have one. And as you have stated, Ms. McKenzie, she's a big mayor, right? You can see her all day. So, why are we making puffering up a position that you don't even operate in, because we have a mayor? Just a thought, because I see that being more celebrated with the blue ribbons and the, and the balloons and the banners that are bigger than life as mayor pro tem than you are a councilwoman. If you're a councilwoman, be councilwoman, not a position that you were not elected to, which doesn't even exist.
Thank you, sir.
Sir, would you please state your name for the record?
James Walker.
Thank you, sir.
This is difficult for me.
Could you state your name for the record?
This is Chisulo Okuno Ajonaku. It's difficult, because I am very emotionally empathetic and, and very concerned. I know I got three minutes, and so I'm trying to adjust to get across what I came up here to get across.
Sir, could you get the microphone closer? Thank you.
All right. So, let me bring this up a little bit. Hold it right there. Is that better? Okay, let me go.
Yes, sir.
Mayor, council, citizen, College Park, I want to give a brief two-minute report on the programs of United Action for the Advancement of Humanity, where I serve as the principal agent, as well as the treasurer. Well, first, I want to go ahead to say that our organization is all about improving the lives of people. I love people, and I know how to respond to people's needs. And I utilize a science, a social science. And I've also had some associates who also have learned a special social science. We utilize this new science to empower women, to enlighten males, and to foster unity, racial unity, unity within a community. We, we create programs and services in the community that bring about connectivity, connectivity. Connectivity is the starting place for unity. We do all this so that individuals can come together and thrive together. Unity Day was one of our first programs, first sponsored programs, and now we are looking to establish our next program, which is the Ambassador Petty Cabs of College Park. The Ambassador Petty Cabs of College Park. Many people have asked questions regarding this service. This service is not only going to be impactful for our community, it's going to bring about more connectivity.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Thank you. I do have some flyers, if I can show you.
Thank you, sir.
For anyone, I have flyers and information about our Ambassador Petty Cabs service.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
And it's also response to social media.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Mario Malcolm. I'm greetings, Mayor, Council.
Can you speak up? Thank you.
Maybe this mic, can you hear me better now?
Yes, sir.
I wanted to come and just give an opinion on something. We hear this term, moving the city forward all the time, which I am all in favor of. However, a part of moving the city forward, in my opinion, is embracing the younger community. There were things that was voted against last year, and I understand why. Maybe because some people may be stuck in tradition, stuck in their ways, or don't see a, a positive benefit in one thing, and that's totally fine. However, if we want to attract a younger generation, a younger crowd here, we have to be able to learn how to embrace them. And sometimes that means doing what you, I'm not speaking to one person in particular, may not want to do. I'm saying that to say there, about vape stores, for prime example. Another example would be clubs that don't sell food. I guess that's what it is. In my opinion, College Park has a lot of potential, and we're not capitalizing on all that potential, because we're set in our ways. In addition to that comment, I also wanted to say, I pray in 2025 that we all can just get along. To me, it's too much, it's a lot of infighting, and it's, and it's causing the citizens to go back and forth, and that's never healthy. Unfortunately, I'm, I mean, not unfortunately, but gracefully, I am the type of person, I don't take none of that stuff kind of person. I can move on pretty easily. But we, we just need to get along. I mean, we have an all-black council with a black city manager, with a black city attorney, and if I'm not mistaken, our deputy clerk is black. This is not a good look for us. I mean, we, they already say we're heathens. They already say all these negative things about us, and yet we're proving their point. We're showing them that we can't get along. And we're gonna disagree. I don't, I don't agree with everything. You know, me and, me and Mr. James, most James have had words, not negative words, but we've disagreed in a great way, and we can still shake each other's hand, dap each other up, and move on by our day. That's what having constructive disagreements is all about. And I think that should be going on citywide. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Rexwell is 1926 John Calvin Avenue. Hello, Mayor and Council, City Manager. I wouldn't plan on coming up and speak tonight, but a lot of times I get pulled in. It's very difficult to come up and not address someone when they're attacking you. I almost says this, and I'm gonna go to the positive end. It's easy to get up... It's easy to get up here when you've been fed by people to sad things, but you're not doing anything in the community? Or you come up and want to talk about Sabrina, myself, or the council? But I ain't seen Ms. Lester before. I've been in the city 45 years. We've been doing the job in the city, in the community, with employees. She ain't did anything except come up here and complain and being fed information by someone sitting up there. But I'm not even going to address it. So I'm going to move on, but I just had to say that. But I want to say, congratulations to all the honorees from the Black History yesterday, the mayor, the councilwoman one, Pro Tem, Mayor Motley Broom, Council Tracy Arnold, congratulations. City manager, congratulations. I just have to say, it was such an awesome, awesome event yesterday. I mean, coming to the Black History, commit to the Black History Program for many years. We had almost 500 people yesterday. And what I said to anybody, I'm not going to turn around, I won't to. But I didn't see some of you all there. I'm not saying that you didn't have a right not to be there, but we about our people and we about all people, not just black, white. Michelle Lance, the Culture Art Program did outstanding job. They've been doing outstanding job. I'm about bringing this city together. But as Dr. Tulu said earlier, everybody got a right to their opinion, their feelings, but we got to move forward. Councilwoman McKenzie, the mayor Pro Tem. I never questioned the mayor for her being the mayor, just some of her actions. But I moved on from it. And I asked you all last year, let's move on. Still getting feeling what councilwoman Pro Tem doing? Let's see how can you help and improve the city like Sabrina and I are doing. I challenge any of you to get off your reins, to get out here and get involved with the community.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Amen.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Sherri Godfrey. I reside at 1996 Lyle Avenue. I didn't intend on speaking here tonight, but I just want to piggyback on what Mr. Willis commented on to challenge folks to get off their backs and take action and move the city forward. I just want to say for all that the Willises do in the community with the youth track program and supporting youth in our city and all they've done in the years past, to seriously consider, as Ms. Willis sits as the Chair of VIDA, you need to think about your taking away or supporting taking away green space from the children that you serve in Ward One, in the Housing Authority, in the homeowners with Ward One, all the children within our district. When you look at that park and you support taking it away to replace it with apartments, think about how that contributes to your legacy when you support and further advocate youth athletes and the impact that you make on the children in the community. It's, I don't see how you don't think about that with the legacy that you have in your track program. And let me just add, let's not pretend that Michelle Johnson is the prosecutor here. Stanley Muhammad is the aggressor, womanizer, and bully. To pretend that automatically, the whiteness automatically breeds racism and hatred merely because of skin color is no better than white folks assuming that black skin is by default criminal-minded or inadequate. Hold humans accountable for their actions and thoughts and their own merits. Anyone in my beloved community of historic College Park can attest, we come together as neighbors to support one another in celebration of new jobs, solace for the loss of a parent, God bless Angie Walker for losing her dad, cheering for child success. We are a community in spite of, in the face of, in commitment in preserving our community. Cheers to 2025 election year and returning to transparent governance, economic development, and think takes to promote the greater good and not self-serving officials. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. I think that covers pretty much everybody in the room.
Pardon me, mayor?
So I think that covers pretty much everybody in the room. Emails?
Yes, I have a few emails. We have 51 seconds left.
We were supposed to email, it's far too.
This one is from Tom Coleman. Dear Mayor and councillor, council, it is always a good idea to, when given the opportunity, improve on an earlier decision. This council has twice shown its ability to revise actions so as to benefit all citizens. The finding the Flint Green Space and the reopening of the Rock Wall are two instances where improvements to earlier action have resulting in returning recreational opportunities to the city.
I'm sorry, we don't have a quorum. We'll wait till we have a quorum.
City Attorney. I believe they can read public comments. We're not taking any action. We've had discussions up here before without a quorum for over an hour.
I'm the presiding officer. We're going to wait on at least one of them to come back so we can have a quorum. No, sir. We'll wait.
A similar opportunity now presents itself to you, our elected officials. The 2024 offer by Creed Acquisition to privately convert Bill Evans Ball Field to high-density residences has expired. The marquee Grissom Organization in conjunction with Morehouse College is eager to revamp the field and return to its recreational
All right.
Purpose.
That's the end of 36 minutes?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
All right. Don't have a public hearing. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion.
Thank you, Councilmember Karn. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember Arnold. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Abstain.
All right. So the motion passes with the approval of Councilmembers Karn and Arnold and Mayor Pro Tem McKenzie abstains. Is there a motion on item 10A?
Are you sounding the agenda?
Yes, sir. Agenda item 10A, consideration and action on a request to approve funding of the Georgia First Responder PTSD Program as presented by Rose Stewart, Director of Human Resources and Risk Management.
Is there a motion?
So move.
Thank you, Councilmember McKenzie. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember Karn. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That is unanimous amongst those present.
Let's do it. Now, so is this going to be annual, we're coming up annually?
Payment for the PTSD program can be semi-annually or annually.
Okay, all right.
Item 10B is consideration of an action on a request to amend the GMA Retirement Plan Adoption Agreement to allow retirees to return to work with no suspension of retirement benefits. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Thank you, Councilmember McKenzie. Is there a second?
Mayor Pro Tem, that is.
My apologies. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember Karn. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That is unanimous amongst those present?
Agenda item 10C, consideration of an action on a request to amend an ordinance regarding the Board of Ethics Enforcement Policy. This item is requested on behalf of Councilwoman Tracy Arnold.
Is there a motion?
Motion.
Thank you, Councilmember Arnold. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember Karn. Any discussion?
Oh, yeah.
Mayor Pro Tem McKenzie?
I still, I definitely agree that we need to update this ethics agreement, the board, and, but I am a little concerned about some of the things that I'm seeing in the document. I do see that we are supposed to have three attorneys and two individuals. I'd like to see more qualifications for the members that are going to be, the five members, I guess, that are going to be the composition and what the requirements again would be for those persons. So I'm just asking that we look into, you know, I do want to get this going, but I do have some concerns about a few things and I'd like to, I'd actually like to table it and so until we can kind of go over it some more.
Councilmember Arnold?
So the qualifications for the board includes five positions. Three of the positions will be licensed attorneys outside of the city of College Park. It will be the city manager and the city attorney that will vet those individuals and present those individuals to us to actually, to approve. Two of the positions will be citizens outside of the city of College Park that will sit on the board. So that's all included inside of the language. Those two individuals will have to have significant experience in law. So they will have to be like paralegals or working in law, but they are not necessarily licensed attorneys.
Okay. And so like I said, I don't have a problem with the legislation, but that, I want that to be included.
Yeah, it's in writing. It's out of the documents.
In terms of those two persons? I didn't see.
Yes.
Okay, I didn't see that. In the composition, I didn't see that they should have a background in law.
It is. My bad. No, it's okay.
Okay.
Councilmember Karn?
I think this is something that's needed. I did want to see, there were a few additions I'd like to take a look at, but I think we need to put something in place. City manager, I would like to at some point revisit and there are a couple of nits that I thought we might want to add to this to just kind of tighten a few things up, possibly on into March. And if we do need to add an addendum or something, or small amendment, we've got some ability to do that. I'm okay with it.
Okay, so Councilmember Karn, are you saying that you would want to approve this today and then just make the adjustments? Okay, I can get with that. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, that is unanimous.
Agenda item 10D, consideration of an action on a request to approve a resolution as staple machine, the Mayor Pro Tem Rotation Policy.
Is there a motion?
Motion.
Thank you, Councilmember Gay. Is there a second?
Second, but that's.
There's always discussion. Thank you, Councilmember Karn. Go right ahead.
Okay, so this is coming up every year. We've been talking about rotating it. Is that, that's still going to require a vote? Is that right? Right.
This actually doesn't prohibit a council from doing whatever they want. It's not bound by the rotation.
City Attorney, thank you for answering my question. I really appreciate it.
I wasn't answering your question. I was just saying.
City Attorney.
Sir, I heard you and I appreciate it. Thank you. I certainly appreciate that.
Thank you too, mayor. I appreciate it. You're welcome.
All right. So any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
That is unanimous.
Agenda item 10E, consideration of an action on a request to approve the speed limit reduction on Rugby Avenue from 30 miles per hour to 25 miles per hour. This is a request from Chief Connie Rogers. This will serve as Ward One.
Is there a motion?
Moved.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember Karn. Is there any discussion?
Yes, I.
Mayor Pro Tem, go right ahead.
Yeah, I had been receiving phone calls from some of our residents living in the rugby area and just concerns about the traffic just going too fast through the neighborhood. And we met with Chief and some of our public works persons and Dr. Adedaren. And I want to thank you, Chief, for being out there. And so this is what, an agreement that we came to just to start. And Chief has some other ideas for how we can even continue. I just have concerns when it comes to adding more speed bumps, which I think we also said we were going to look into that. We already have three speed bumps on Rugby and we talked about adding two. And the biggest concern that I have with additional speed bumps is it still slows down the emergency response time. So just want everybody to know, the more speed bumps we put out there, you're taking a seconds away from an ambulance being able to get to a person, which could even be, you know, the difference between life and death. And so the speed bumps would be something that would just be a temporary fix and Chief is going to be looking into some other technology that can help us, so.
We're going to add some additional speed enforcement signage on Rugby as well in addition to lowering the speed by five to see if that helps with some of the complaints that have been coming. Yes, and I'm also looking into, there's a vendor out there that has something on the line of the school enforcement camera, but it's a residential enforcement camera. So we're looking at something along that nature that possibly if this that we're putting in place doesn't suffice, then we may be looking into adding a residential enforcement camera.
So if we get those cameras, instead of it being smile, you're on candid camera. It's going to be slow down. You're on candid camera.
With a ticket in the mail.
Yes, ma'am. Yes. Thank you. Thank you, Chief.
No problem.
Any further discussion? Councilmember Karn?
One of the things, I've gotten some issues there for, on Windsor Forest Court, I think. The main drag with the, well, the majority of the homes are over there. I've had several residents ask for speed bumps over there. They're asking somewhere between three or four, probably three maybe better. But city manager, I want to take a look at that at some point here, really, really soon. And I don't know what the speed limit is on that street. I hope it's not 35, because it's a pretty small street.
We'll get traffic. It's 25. We'll get the traffic unit out there and engineer to look at the specs because that kind of project has to be bitted out. That's what we, the same, the last ones I put in was in Ward Four and it has to be bitted out.
Now, remember at some point, we put them in ourselves at one point or another. Have we stopped doing that or is that a possibility still?
Yeah, the last ones that, since I've been here, that I was involved in, they had to be bitted out and those was the last one that went into Ward Four.
Well, if we have to beat them out, okay. If we can't do them ourselves, but let's take a look over there and see what we can do. Either way, we want to, I want to get going on that, so, all right.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Hearing none will move to a vote. All those in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
All right, that is unanimous. City Attorney's Report.
I, I submitted a, some city attorney's report. That's, uh, in the council's packet, but, uh, beyond that information I supplied, I have nothing further.
City Mancheer's Report?
Done tonight, ma'am.
All right.
Camera, I'm in the program for the year, you know, spoke for itself.
It did. It did. All right. So, I wanna thank the entire Black History Committee, our, our amazing Recreation and Cultural Arts Department, all the staff of the GICC. Yesterday's Black History Celebration was amazing. It, um, it was moving. I was especially touched by the part with, um, the kids from College Park Elementary and other surrounding schools who told the stories of the legends of the one square mile. And, um, I wanna thank Linda Hightower, all of FOA for their support and their advocacy and their involvement in our community. And I also wanted to thank Dr. Lanise Littleton, uh, from the Atlanta History Center. She did an amazing keynote address, and she brought College Park's history to life in a tangible way and told the stories of the families who literally built this city. But it has been a busy couple of weeks. I want to thank Congresswoman Lucy McBath, who made a very quick trip to College Park on Tuesday, the 28th. Um, she and her staff came to Coca-Cola United's bottling facility on Sullivan Road and learned a little bit more about how integral the plant is in our community. Uh, Congresswoman McBath is most, she is recently representing parts of College Park. Uh, she, her sixth district was redistricted, so now she's got, uh, parts of Sullivan Road and parts of Old National and Godby. And so, she is looking forward to getting into the district more, uh, connecting with us, uh, but we were very excited to welcome her there and the entire Coca-Cola United, uh, team was welcoming her with open arms. And the Georgia Municipal Association had their Cities United Summit. It was a wonderful convention. It is a gathering of all of the municipal elected officials from across the state. They all converged on Atlanta the weekend before last. Uh, I wanna thank the entire GMA team for all of their dedication to putting on an amazing conference. I had the opportunity to attend three different classes, one in human trafficking, one in annexation, and one in water management, all three of which apply to the work that we do here. Uh, the human trafficking class was outstanding. We needed six hours instead of three in it, uh, because I think sometimes when we talk about human trafficking, we think of sex trafficking. That is the most visible part of human trafficking. That's what we see in movies. That's what we see in news stories. Um, but actually, labor trafficking is more prevalent. And certainly throughout our state, uh, we see a lot of labor trafficking. We see lots of individuals who are being taken advantage of, uh, in their employment situations. And so, uh, this class gave us the opportunity to learn more about human trafficking in general and some strategies that local communities can take in terms of partnerships with, um, law enforcement agencies and the like to make sure that we are doing everything that we can, uh, to stop it in our communities. And our annexation class, uh, talked about some of the ways in which local governments can work together on some of these processes. They can often be very difficult and very contentious. And so, we talked a lot about how counties, school boards, and municipalities can actually work together to make that process smoother. But I would have to say, the favorite class that I had by far was water management. Um, I didn't think that was gonna be the case, but we talked all things water, storm water, uh, wastewater, drinking water, and about the planning commissions that control water policy in each part of the state. Now, while we are at the top of the Flint River watershed, we're actually not part of that regional water commission. We are actually part of the Metro Atlanta one because we're part of Metro Atlanta as well. And so, that actually gives us multiple resources as we think about the expansion that, um, we expect in our city. And we talked about data centers and how they are putting lots of stress on not only electrical systems, but water systems as well. And so, we talked about closed-loop cooling and how that's gotta be, I'm, I'm looking at Mr. Richardson and, and talking about that. Um, but we talked about a lot of the things that are happening throughout the state, and one of the things that the instructors reinforced is how well Georgia has planned for the water resources that we need. And, um, and because that happens on a regional scale and then the regional folks get together and talk about some of the state issues, that we are well poised not only for the residents that we have here today, but expansion and economic development. We also had policy meetings while we were at GMA. Um, I sat in on a great conversation about the future of AI and its uses, not only internally in cities, but how to help support our residents with their goals, like improve literacy. Uh, Senator, I'm sorry, Representative Brad Thomas is trying to get money in the state budget for a, uh, childhood litis- literacy program involving AI. And one of the questions that I had for him was how do we think about adults as well? Because we have underemployed people in our communities who need those literacy skills. And Representative Thomas said, "Let's talk about that. Let's see what we can do and how we can build on it." He's working on the childhood component thus far, but he is a firm believer in AI. Uh, he is, he's gone to MIT and, and done lots of classes on it, and so I think there's a great opportunity to have some further discussions as the use of AI continues to grow. Uh, I had the opportunity as the first Vice President of the Georgia Municipal Association to lead the Legislative Policy Council. Uh, we met this morning at 8:30. We meet most Monday mornings at 8:30, and we also had a meeting at the conference. And we got updated from both of the leaders, uh, the House Majority Leader Chuck F. Stration and the House Minority Leader Carolyn Hughley. Wanna thank both of them for coming to our Legislative Policy Council meeting. Uh, we talked about some of the things that the governor and each party see on the horizon. Uh, obviously, there's been a lot of talk about tort reform. Uh, the governor came out with his plan last week, and so they're sort of sorting that out. Um, there has been a bill that's been dropped that would extend our opportunity to consider what we wanna do in regard to House Bill 581, but for now, there's no change. So, March 1st is the deadline as of right now. But, uh, GMA is monitoring legislation, not only on that, but truck weights, drones, public works bidding, rental registries, and sanctuary city policies. So, I will certainly keep everyone updated as we move forward. I wanna congratulate all the municipal leaders, uh, who were recognized by Georgia Trend as notable Georgians and, um, the 100 most influential Jordans, Georgians. I had an opportunity to go to that Georgia Trend luncheon and, um, celebrate all of them, including Mayor Andre Dickens, who was selected by Georgia Trend as the Georgian of the Year. It was a wonderful celebration of some public servants and also private individual, or individuals that work in the private capacity, all who are working for the betterment of our state. Uh, and I'm also looking forward to representing College Park again as, for the second year in a row, as the liaison between, uh, the National League of Cities Board of Directors, which I'm a member, and the Small Cities Council. The Small Cities Council represents 50,000, cities of 50,000 residents and under. And so, its first meeting is tomorrow. We're looking forward to kicking off that year for the, for the council. Uh, Mary Sarver from Grandview, Texas is our Chair, and Rashad Roberts and Gloria Solorio, um, from Chadborn, North Carolina and Avondale, Arizona respectively, are the vice chairs. So, I'm looking forward to working with them. I'm also looking forward to working with councilmembers Rosanetta Kirby and Veronica Parrott from Lovejoy, who are also on the Small Cities Council. So, we are well represented from the South Side, um, and it should be a great year in that regard. Um, wanted to also remind everyone, Wednesday, February 5th, 6:30, we have a charrette for, the second charrette, for the Six West Residential Development. This is your opportunity to join us at the Brady Center to get your voice heard about how you want to see this residential development go. The developer will be there, circling around the room, looking at what the residents want. So, please take this opportunity. You can sign up, uh, through collegepartga.com and just, just come on out. We will see you at 6:30 on Wednesday. And, uh, lastly, I wanna say that I'm, I'm concerned about a particular situation with some of our business owners. We have business owners that have paid for their licenses and have not gotten the full year. We are trying to put things in place, but these folks deserve their licenses. We should be supporting businesses throughout this community, and it's highly troubling that we are, we are impeding their process. I don't think that... I, I understand we have rules and we have laws. And, but I, but I don't think we should be in the position of picking and choosing winners and losers. And if someone has paid for a year-long business license, they should receive it. That's all I've got. Mayor Protem McKenzie?
All right. Um, it's been a wonderful, wonderful last two weeks of January and just the video. I am not going to talk.
February 3rd Report. February is Black History Month. Ninety-nine years ago, Dr. Carter G. Woodson created Negro History Week in honor of Dr. Frederick Douglass, who was born in February of 1818, paying tribute to generations of African-Americans who struggled with adversity to achieve citizenship in American society, and also the amazing contributions we've made to our country. Yesterday, the city of College Park held our annual Black History Month Celebration. The theme was Sankofa, which is the Western African practice of looking back to move forward. During this time, approximately 30 persons and organizations who have made significant accomplishments in our community were honored with tokens of appreciation. And I was, um, honored to be given the Flame Award for being the first black and the first black woman to be elected to Ward One and the first black and female mayor pro tem from the same. Now for events. These last two weeks have been quite busy as we set out to practice the needed hard work to build College Park better. On Saturday, January 25th, I partnered with members of our fire department, the Red Cross, and Delta Sigma Theta, and Councilman Joe Carm to install smoke alarms in homes throughout College Park. It was an amazing experience, and we can definitely say many of our homeowners are a lot safer right now because of these amazing efforts. Thank you to everyone that participated in this event. Then the next day, on Sunday, January 26th, Pam and I attended the MEAG Power Dinner during the GMA Cities Summit. The next day, we held our Main Street Business Connect. What an amazing experience. This was an opportunity, we had over 51 business owners who came together from Main Street and some from College Park throughout the city to discuss how, you know, what we can do as a city to, to make things better, to keep our business, uh, owners more informed, and how we can begin to collaborate on future projects. Then the next day, on January 28th, I joined hands with Favor House and Public Works to give food away to our employees. I wanna shout out to Rex Willis for all that he does for the members of our community and our staff. We really appreciate you so much. In an effort to get more community involvement into our Six West Residential, uh, project, I organized a series of charrettes, working with the Business Industrial Development Authority. And these, uh, sessions are designed to let you know, uh, what we're looking at for our 55-acre residential component of Six West. It was so exciting to have over 70 members of our community stakeholders again, uh, to, to, to give input and, and to say what it is that we would like to see. Also, on January 30th, I was honored to represent the city of College Park as a panelist at the Georgia Black Constructors Conference, where we discussed and shared development opt- updates and opportunities in Six West and throughout our city. And this past weekend, on Saturday, we held our BIDA retreat. It was led by our Economic Development Director, Brian Hooker. He shared, and we received great information from Ed Wall, Douglas Selby, Latonya Wiley, and then Congressman Kwanza Hall, who now serves as the Chair of the Fulton County Development Authority. And a special shout out to our phenomenal BIDA Chair, Dr. Sabrina Willis, for all she is doing to ensure the success of our BIDA in 2025. And now for Ward One updates. If you drive a fireway, you'll see that we are adding onto the sidewalk that will run all the way to Washington Road. And then later, we'll extend that sidewalk to go from Washington Altway to Lyle. Last week, I also met with members of our Public Works Team, our Chief of Police, and our City Manager to discuss how we can alleviate some of the speeding on Rugby. And we will continue to do all we can to make our streets safe for our residents. Now, February is also the Love Month. Oh, yeah, we've got Valentine's Day coming up. And over the next two weeks, we're rolling out our Love Drop Program. This is something that we're gonna do. We'll be stopping at the homes of different seniors in locations where we know that you guys hang out, and some of our employees too, and just sharing tokens of love with you over the next two weeks because you matter. This is Mayor Protem Jamel McKenzie with my February 3rd report. Have a great next two weeks, everyone.
Councilmember Carne?
All right, thank you. Uh, great weather we had today. Uh, that was, uh, felt like it was springtime going into summer. Uh, couple of things. Uh, Hugh Richardson, uh, just, uh, how are we looking with the, uh, Edison Road project? So, they're on board and, uh, so you think we're gonna be breaking some ground sometime before? Okay, that's good news, and we're looking forward to that. Um, we have a data center over on Godby. Uh, if this happens, uh, ladies and gentlemen, uh, this is going to provide a significant boost in the arm for the city of College Park, uh, as that new, uh, utility electric customer comes online. Uh, if it's as big as I think it's going to be, I think this governing body can look at more utility savings for our residents. Uh, so I hope that's translating across the camera. That means, uh, tax savings and utility savings, uh, for our community. So, we're hoping for the best on that. Uh, thank you to BIDA for making the decisions in terms of, uh, land that we do have available. Uh, I have quite a few things here. Uh, City Manager, uh, the Sullivan Road, uh, speed enforcement, uh, sign is, it, it's not functioning properly. Uh, it's been on the blink. One of the digits were out, and I don't know if both are, one or both are out at this point, but I would like to get that replaced, uh, as soon as possible. And Chief, I know, I don't know if you handled that or, but I definitely wanna get that one replaced. Also, the Camp Creek sign, as far as I can tell, is completely out at this point, going down towards Washington Road, uh, Herschel Road, uh, there, past the racetrack. Um, it looks like that, that sign is completely out. It's, it's, I've been up and down there many, many, many times. Uh, so we wanna, uh, definitely, uh, get that one repaired or replaced or whatever we need to do. A couple of things going on. I wanna speak on the, uh, the Black History Month program, uh, was a monumental display of our history. It was really, really, really wonderful. And, uh, you know, it's funny, you know, someone told me a long time ago when I was a little boy, he said, he said, "You know, you know, you may not understand it now, but the older you get, the more you're gonna appreciate the history, your history, and what folks have put into, uh, making it, uh, where you stand today," in a sense. Uh, we honored our first black- We honored our first black department heads. And, you know, it was weird, you know, you say to yourself, you know, when I got here, I was the young gun, and I made the thirty under thirty with the Georgia trends and everything. And, you know, I said, I'll never be like those old grumpy guys up there. But time passes, and now you're part of the old guard, I guess, more or less. But looking at all of those first black department heads, the majority of which I had a big hand in hiring those folks. So it was great to see a lot of good folks and department heads that have come and gone. We lost a few and passed on, and condolences to those department head families that we lost. Honoring the first black city council members, that was quite a treat, a big part of history. And we have these programs in an effort to preserve our history. And that is a serious matter for any community. If you're not preserving your history, you're losing a significant portion of your community. One of the things that we all can do currently to preserve our history, how many of y'all are familiar with College Park Elementary School? I guess most people here. That's probably our most significant public school citywide. Some of you all are aware that that school was the site of Eva Thomas School originally. And Eva Thomas was one of the most courageous black educators in this region. And this woman served College Park. This woman set an example for all of us up here. The school was named for her previously. And if you want to help us preserve our legacy, and this is not a black, white, or Republican or Democrat thing, this is a community thing. We voted unanimously for a resolution to request the Fulton County School Board rename College Park Elementary to Eva L. Thomas Elementary School in honor of our original roots and our city legacy. So we need your support. We're going to be going to a school board meeting upcoming, probably if not the end of February, March. We'd like to see the entire, I repeat, entire, community at this school board meeting in unity and solidarity. And that's from block for block throughout this city. We would like a big turnout to support our community and our legacy, and we can honor our children no better than showing them our history so that they can pass the history down and know, well, who was this woman that this school was named for, and why was she so great, and why did she represent and care for College Park citizens and children so much? So it's a big part of our history. And history's hard. You know, we recognize some of our first families in College Park. There were a few that were not recognized and some that were, but there's so many names, too many to mention. The Dent Family, the Phillips Family, the Willis Families, the High Tower Family, the Greers, too many. I don't want to start the ball rolling, but these families were pillars in our community and still are. So we want to always remember that. We will not let our city's legacy fade on into the night. So in 2005, you know, we've got a chance to, again, hit that reset button and make a better city and make things better. So what are we looking for this year? Well, we are looking for, and we are looking forward to unity and governance, unity and governance. That means up here, y'all, you're going to see this board working together more than ever, and we're going to get through our differences. We've got an upcoming retreat. We're going to be there, and we're going to sit in solidarity and work out our differences and work through our issues. We're looking for community progress. We're looking for black excellence. We're looking for all of these things, and I think, and I know that we are capable of all of these things. Mr. Bobby Wilson, I want to thank you for coming out. We've got a great community garden coming up. It's going to be one of the best in the region. Mr. Wilson is putting all his effort towards it. We're going to get started as soon as possible because we got to be in the ground for March, for spring planting. So we're going to really get moving on this project. It's going to be really, really, really amazing, y'all, and I'm very, very excited about it. We are talking about something that we seriously need in our community more of, and I cannot stress enough how important it is to have fresh fruits and vegetables, one hundred percent organic, pesticide-free, in a food desert within the walkable distance of literally thousands of our residents. This is going to be groundbreaking, and it's going to be very, very, very exciting. City Manager, we're working, this is part of my community enhancements. That Sprinter van that I was requesting also, which I want to put on maybe one of the next agendas, that's going to be one of our delivery vehicles for fresh vegetables and fruits. Also, it's going to be converted as a, it's going to serve a dual purpose. See, I want to get as much mileage as possible out of that van. It's also going to serve as our bookmobile, our first bookmobile for our community literacy program. We're going to flood this community with books, and we're going to make sure they're in the hands of our community, especially our young people. So we're really excited about that. Our Community Trash Receptacles Program, this is a very, very unique project that we're going to do in College Park. We're starting it as a pilot. We're going to keep this city cleaner than ever before. We hired four additional sanitation ambassadors just for this very project to make sure we're eliminating blight in this community. We're going to work on our community trash receptacles with the Promise Career Academy, our next-door neighbor, right over here. I looked up the prices of some of these outdoor trash receptacles, and, you know, they're six, seven, eight hundred dollars. And I said to myself, that's pretty expensive for a trash receptacle, you know. I don't think I've ever paid over twenty dollars for a trash receptacle, but that's a home model, of course. But it occurred to me, next door, we've got our young people, and they have a welding course, welding program, right next door. So I went over there, and I talked with Principal Bell. We met with the welding teacher, and we're going to work out something where our students are going to help design those receptacles and weld those receptacles and put those in their community. So we're very, very excited about that. The City Portfolio Book, it came out even better than I really expected, to be honest. So City Manager, we thank you for that. Communications did a spectacular job putting that together. We only printed out five hundred, but I'm just about out of my books already. So I can tell you right now, we're going to need another five hundred ASAP. So we want to get that out. The more we talk about our city and the more we show our city, the better off we're going to be. I was on a call with Representative Schofield last week with local college students. We talked about public policy and student leadership and servant leadership. I also attended the martyr, State of Martyr address with the unveiling of our new martyr rail cars. And, you know, we pay into that penny in Fulton County. Those new rail cars are modern and sleek, so we're looking forward to good things there. And I think that's about all I got. I guess that's enough. So that's all I got for today.
Councilman Varnell.
Thank you. Okay, before I forget, because Councilman Carron just reminded me, in those same books, please, 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 don't forget to mention Style Mob University. So on that second page where we have the highlights of the education in the schools that we have in the city of College Park, please do not forget about our own HBCU, where we have a world-class beauty college/university where students have housing and they can receive financial aid. All right, so some updates that I have. First of all, I want to thank both the Communications Department and the Black History Program Committee for a job well done on an awesome Black History program, and then the Communications Department for their support in the program, along with the video that they presented this evening, which highlighted everything that we've accomplished in 2024 and what we're looking forward to this year as far as our accomplishments and our goals are concerned. I also want to put out a gentle reminder to the Communications Department to not forget that we have our retreat coming up. And so I think that we have some deadlines and making sure that we put out some type of notification to let the community know that we will have that retreat starting the 21st? Yep, the 21st through the 23rd. So we don't want to forget to put that out to make the citizens aware of the fact that we're having that retreat. And then I want to thank the Old National Merchants Association for inviting me and Councilman Carr to their networking and mixer on Thursday evening, where we had the opportunity to share some updates and highlights for the city. And I'm very appreciative of the fact that they had this mixer that they typically have in the mornings in the evening. And so I was able to participate in my first one, and so I'm looking forward to being able to join them in future mixers. I just, and I don't have a lot else to share other than reminding the constituents that we have the Ward Three survey that is still open, and you can go and fill out that survey at CPWardThree.com. I want to hear your voice so that we, when we have this upcoming retreat, I will understand what is needed in the community. And then I believe that Sean mentioned to me that we had some constituents that were a bit confused on how to reach our office. If there are citizens out there that have concerns, constituent support can be received by emailing us at CPWardThree@CollegeParkGA.com, or you can always feel free to call the office. Mr. Francis is here Monday through Friday, eight to five. Even though I may not be in the office, he knows how to get in touch with me, and he definitely reaches out to me every day with an update so that we can respond quickly to the needs of the constituents. Outside of that, that is all that I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Burgay.
Okay, Mayor, I have a few things. Councilwoman McKenzie, we need to all start getting on the video. You should just let us all do that. This amazing video. And you also had an amazing state of the Ward One. That was very nice. People should appreciate the time you take to be proud of yourself and your ward. On Roosevelt Highway, Director Hugh, there's no lights from, there's no lighting, lighting is very dim. Right there at Walt Bellamy, that little entranceway, it's pitch dark. I almost hit somebody one morning. It's just, so we need to look at adding additional lighting. That's my second request. We agreed that we would request proclamations, so I would like to add three Ward Four Resident Proclamations for our, it would be March, it would be March. We don't do it in February, so March. Okay, service line repair. Okay, we got derailed when the National League of Cities partnered with a service line provider and was told that we were violating the gratuity clause, which was not true. But that being said, I guess they wanted to pick their battles. But we have made, my colleagues have put money in a nonprofit, which negates the gratuity. Similarly, Fulton County negates the gratuity by a program that you all familiar with called Home Stabilization. That's where residents can, so you can negate, ma'am, the gratuity clause by a nonprofit. So Rose, we need to kick that up because these citizens are expecting this benefit. And I think all my colleagues paid into it as well. Speaking of speed tables, I'm too getting bombarded with requests, so I would like to, Chief, look at an RFP for four-speeded speed tables on Janice Drive. As you know, there was an accident there on Saturday, and I think that's the straw that broke the camera back. My residents are saying, no more, they need speed tables. I want to talk a little bit briefly. Mayor, you asked the financial lady, what was the TPD fund balance? It's amazing that of all those balances, that's one that would resonate with you because that's one that I've been identifying for, the potential way to fund botanical garden and camp true. Right now, we're at an impasse. We have two professionals who are at an impasse on what the balance is. We may have to involve Banks, Finley, and Whitehead. We might have to go back and get our previous auditors. But we have two professionals who are at an impasse on what the fund balance is. So we will be, and you're welcome to assist us because at the end of the day, we just need to know the right accounting. So this week, we will ask our auditors to get with our financial advisor and our interim and up-incoming, and let's figure this out. Because if that number's not right, there are other numbers that may not be right. The next one is, we have a lot of problems with our gas stations. Okay, we're seeing a proliferation of vapes, paraphernalias. So, you know, this city isn't that big, but the point I'm making is, you know, our youth are being impacted by the amount of vapes that we are allowing our merchants to sell, our Indian merchants. You don't see those same, you don't see that in some communities. If you go to Sandy Springs, some community, you don't see vape pipes in racetrack or Q-Tip, Quick Trip. When Jack Longino was living, he had a standard of this city, and we need to uphold that same standard. College Park has always been known for a no-nonsense city. We do not need to let our standards down because we get gas, or we get campaign donations, or we get something else. We need to make sure that our children are not, and we're not bringing people to our city to buy cut for their dope or whatever. Go to East Point. Go to City of South Florida, but not in College Park. Kind of y'all need to go and get this mess out of these gas stations. And the next thing is, a family of Hispanics came to me and said that they are losing their homes from addiction to gambling. We are allowing these same Indian merchants to give cash payments at these gambling machines. If you go to these gas stations, you're going to see grown men in these gas stations when they should be out working. And that done got so bad, now they got rooms now, like, 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 like rooms. You go in and all that gas, they got them in rooms. And then they have people that you think out there loitering, they giving them the cash. That's not what kind of city we are. You can't, whatever, okay. You can't be this city and then that city. The two can't work. Either you this city or you that city. You can't be both. I'm almost finished. Dr. Eladair, you have, this is not on you, but I've had three open deficiencies for over twenty-four months. Janice Drive, if anybody listen to me on Ward Four, Janice Drive, that house has been open for twenty-four months, Dr. Eladair. When Oscar was here, we tore him down. Now, let Sabrina get a contractor, go board it up, clean up the yard, because Eleanor and all them people living on that street deserve better. Them people spent thousands of dollars to make their houses look pretty, and y'all acting like this don't even exist. Y'all get in the car and drive around. How would you like to live next to it? That ain't cool. That is not who we are. I don't care if we got a short person or whatever. Do your jobs, because if you miss your paycheck, we'll be on the news. Because if you miss your paycheck, we'll be on the news. Then on Janus Drive, that house was on Facebook for dumping. People saying, how does College Park? Janus Drive has a blighted property, Lakeshore Drive. They need, by this time, next Councilman, for the next, whenever the next election is, I'm going to keep talking about the same thing every time. I'm just going to be redundant until it get done. And then I asked, and I know we can, we can get to this, if we could look at a pedestrian's safety. City of Atlanta has a very aggressive, call it P E D S, P E D S. They have a very, very, very aggressive pedestrian safety initiative. They take trips and falls serious. People in Atlanta drive bikes, they walk, they walk, their dogs. Here, we tripping over stomps, uneven concrete, leaves in the sidewalks. Some streets don't even have sidewalks. I got to get on my phone, call, call them to come blow leaves. And Doc, no, I'm telling them because I call them. Don't I call you? Come blow leaves. This is ridiculous. Moms and her baby get to go to the bus stop on Herschel Road. She got to walk on the curb to get to the bus stop because y'all ain't blowed the leaves. You don't see that in some communities. You don't see that. When y'all travel and go to all these conferences and these trainings and y'all look around all them pretty communities, take some pictures and come back and make a difference. That's why we pay for you to go to conferences. Two more, Mayor. We got a problem with campaigning in a church. United College Park is campaigning in a church. You can't do that. You can't be in a church talking about getting rid of elected officials. Somebody need to report them to the Secretary of State. You can't be in a church and then coming down here saying prayer and then camp. You can't do all that. You can't do that. Steve, I'm having campaign rallies in their church. That's, you can't do that. Churches state don't work. Georgia law don't provide that. Next day, they'll be having campaign sessions out there. And you got lawyers going. They know the law. Got two more. C clicks fix. Okay, there's a couch, a big brown couch. I don't know. I thought somebody was going to find it. I got $100 on the couch. I don't have $100. There's a big brown couch that's been there five days. If any staff member, including the director, the IT director, who spent thousands of our dollars, if anybody can prove tonight that they took a picture on C clicks fix, I resign. I vacate my seat.
That's right. I didn't take a picture of it either, but I saw it.
You got to owe your, text me the picture. Text me the picture. Text it to me. But you get my point, right?
That's right. You did say that.
All right, okay, all right, okay. Just a little gallows humor. So I don't think I have anymore. Because you're not going to get rid of me that easy, but seriously. I lie. One last thing. You mentioned Carter G. Wilson, so that's a good call. He was in Omega Man. So, so that's all I have. Mayor, I do have one more, Mayor. The senior tax exemption, you are very, very concerned. You and Senator Sonia helping and Senator Nan O'Rourke and Mayor Bianca Motley Broom, you guys are very, very concerned about that legislation. You're very concerned and you are a fiscal steward. That's a rarity of statesmanship. That being said, that legislation costs $225,000 if every senior over 65 who don't even need it, take it. It'll set us back $225,000. Tonight, we just gave Yannis $400,000. So what's more important? Ms. Robertson, who's in her house right now at stage four cancer.
Councilmember, council, he's, he's got.
Sonia, y'all need to be concerned about the quality of life of our community, not politicking. You can't be politicking on the backs of these people. $225,000 is what that legislation will take. Let it go because karma. Let it go. Leave it alone. Let them pass that bill and give these people a quality of life. So that's what it costs, $225,000. I think I covered it all. Did I miss anything? Mayor?
Everybody, everybody, everybody. Councilman Berge has the floor.
The senior social is actually the chief, Connie Rogers, 16th year, which, 17 year, thank you, of which we are honored to partner with you. Yannis, the chief of police, and let me tell you, Doc, I have never seen a group of professionals like the Reno. And these people are so professional. Everybody, everybody over there on the same page. We need to go learn from them. They on the same page. Ain't nobody moping, grumping, backstabbing, mad, cheating. They all on the same page. How to give College Park a good look on February the 15th? Everybody, your mom's coming, Joe, your mom's coming. Even my 91 mom done called me and asked for two tickets. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Do we have anything in executive session? I'm sorry. I don't think so. All right. So that means at 10:07, we are adjourned. We will see you in two weeks. Take care, everybody.